And we will have opening remarks and pledge of allegiance. Anyone want to offer opening remarks for us tonight? I'll do that. Heavenly Father, we appreciate the burden that rests upon us to be responsible, to be positive and productive, to provide for the residents in the best way that we can. And we pray for guidance. We pray for patience on our part. We pray for wisdom. That that which we do will be the best we might do. We are grateful again for this country that we live in. We are grateful for that too, that opportunity that we have. Would thou be with us now, we pray, in thy son Jesus Christ. Amen. Pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have a timeframe adjustment? I'll go ahead and make a motion to adjust the timeframe for our regular council meeting to nine oh nine oh six PM. Second?
I second it.
I'll vote in favor.
Aye.
Thank you. Number one, we need to ratify the poll vote on the disposition of the city property. I called each of you except Dale. I tried calling Dale, but he was out there tanning himself somewhere.
Off to the Bahamas.
So, the vote was basically to send to the planning commission the ideas relative to the disposition of what to do with our city property. We want them to look at the options that we've presented to you. We want them to evaluate it, to consider it, to add their insights. And then as part of that, that would need, they would need to recommend it, whatever they recommend it for, if we are to sell it, and what portions we're to sell, what items. And, and we have to declare that property surplus property so that we can move forward in a legal manner, list it, improve it, sell it, whatever we would plan to do. But that was the poll vote, basically. If that's okay? So we will go through one at a time and just ratify the vote that you gave me over the phone. Trish?
Yes.
Ty?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, aye.
It doesn't matter. The yes works fine. Okay. Thank you. What we will do now is on Thursday, we will bring that forward to the planning commission and we will give them the information that we have prepared and presented to you. And we'll have, get their insights and recommendations. And then we'll see what they recommend back to the city council. And we, we will plan on having that back to the city council next city council meeting. Okay. In, administered real quickly, the test well. Cody, where are we on that?
They advertise this Sunday.
This coming Sunday?
Yeah, they'll go out this Sunday.
So we thought we were going out, but it did not?
Last Sunday, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there's basically a miscommunication between the two.
Okay.
He was waiting for me to give him the okay with everything.
Yeah, I thought so too, so. He, he-
For our financials to be reported?
No, the bid to see what a test well would come in.
To drill the test well.
It's just to let the bid out. And that bid, once, once it's out.
So it'll go, it has to run for three consecutive weeks. And so we're looking at probably having the bid open on the 24th of February.
We'll keep you appraised of all of that. Let's see. Actually, I'm reporting to Trish. Would you just go over quickly what you were gonna do relative to our city celebration and the scheduling? The issue with the stake?
So, I don't think the scheduling will be an issue at all. What they said, what, I, I talked to the young woman, state young woman's president. And they said that this year they would like to, or this year they're doing Ward Girls Camp. And next year they want to do Ward again, because they've just done two years of stake. So they'd like to like rotate where, one year they do youth conference, the state puts it on, and the ward does the camp and flip, anyway, but they want to do two years. But then she said, even if they do do it next year, then every year it moves up a week until you're bumped to the back. So she said that if they do it next year, it would be like the 17th or 18th of June, if they decide to do it. So it doesn't matter. She's like, so plan it.
Yeah, there's, there's been a shift there. The guy that's in charge of scheduling it works for S E S D and I talked to him last week.
Oh, okay.
Same thing?
Yeah, same thing. So
So are we good?
We're, we're spot on.
So they're changing the date every year?
Yeah, they're, they're gonna rotate it through so that-
So it won't conflict for a while?
It's not gonna conflict. It's, it's, it's all aligned. By the time it does, we'll be a much bigger city.
And all of us will be, and you will be able to see, because you're gonna have some nice full-up streetlights. And I'll be in the bottom of my day. Are we ready to make a motion then to accept, just to continue for that same date? Or do we need, don't need to do the motion and schedule? We'll move ahead then?
Yeah. Just real quickly, we do have an individual on the fire department that is more than ready to help work with you.
Well, and that, I do have-
To coordinate. So we're, we're not duplicating because a member of the fire department has a dump booth and they're bringing it for the fire department. So there's no need for the city to spend the money.
Here's my plan. I asked Tori Mitchell, Brittany knows Tori, if she would head it up. She'd be awesome at it.
She'd be great, yeah.
Anyway, and she said, yeah, but she want, what she was saying was maybe end of February, beginning of March, we put out a thing asking any resident that wants to help with it at all. Have a meeting, anyone that wants to come and help, what's out of meeting, brainstorm ideas, you know what I mean? And then start divvying out assignments.
Okay. The sooner the better, sooner the better.
Okay. She has teacher appreciation for your school. And she's like, I've gotta get that done, and then I can focus on this.
I understand that.
So, once she's done with that, then, if that's okay with you.
So we're looking at June 18th for the city celebration?
No.
No, no.
Twenty fifth, twenty fifth.
It's a week before the fourth. Yeah, they throw a party every year for my anniversary.
Gotta keep doing that.
Always, always conflicts.
I mean, is that what you kind of envisioned though, is wanting to have lots of people come and help and? And then I was-
I think one of the things that would be best is maybe you and I get together and let's go over some of this same information and, and so that, so when that meeting does occur, we have a pretty solid understanding of what the city would like to have happen.
Can we use the building to do that, or?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yes.
Would evening be better, do you think, or?
All of course.
Okay.
And Thursday evenings are usually the better evening.
Okay.
Planning commission is the second and fourth Thursdays. But most wards have their Tuesday, Wednesday is their-
So maybe like the third Thursday of February, tentatively? I'll check with her, does that work?
That'd be marvelous.
And then we can put it on the-
And if you and I can get together before that.
And maybe put it on the Facebook page and-
Facebook page and newsletter.
Okay. And then we can just, that one only slots out at once. The 18th.
Okay, let's put that down for the 18th. Anything else on that?
No, that's all.
Okay. I've already mentioned what's going on with Stoplight on Elk Ridge Drive and Highway 198. And the, we hope that Elk Ridge Drive gets approved with this tip program I have funded. Gets a lot of money, but there's a lot of money out there. And we do have, I'm, we'll just stay at it. Sumwa Mountain Eagle Water Agency has been attending those meetings pretty much regularly. But I, I haven't asked anybody, but I'm gonna ask Ty, would you be responsible to work with Cody and maybe begin attending some of those meetings?
Sure.
As possible. We need to really come to understand water. And Royce and Melanie are gonna be working on some special training as well. Cody has a good feel for it. He understands both systems and Sumwa's gonna go away. It, it's a dying animal. But there's a lot of money invested there that our city has invested, a lot of cities have invested. Though we may or may not get all of it back, we, we don't know, but we're gonna have to stay right on top of that.
Basically, you get to be the watchdog and make sure we get our share back.
Next council meeting, Eagle Water Agency will be here to make a presentation to you as to what Eagle Water Agency is, what they want to do. They want us part of it. To be frank, I'm a little very frustrated. They organized it amongst other groups and then, oh, let's bring Elk Ridge in. They need us because of some of the impact that's going on. I just, a little frustrated. And I've expressed that to some of the leadership there, that that was the case. So-
That should be a question that's asked to them on their hearing.
You better believe that that and other questions will be asked.
Yeah, we just, we need to be appropriate, but we need to be very direct. Because the costs that we will incur will be on top of what we're already still paying to Sumwa, because we're still committed to that Sumwa.
And, and they should be too.
And they are too. The other cities are too, but we need-
They created the others so they could take over the high line.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot, a lot to it. So I believe-
The difference, water districts though, I mean, that's a major will affect Elk Ridge, depending on what we decide to do there.
Yeah, and realistically, if we have to, they can go play ball and we'll just have to run by state regulations and do what we have to do. I mean, they, they can't compel us, but it's kind of, kind of bad to sit on the outside watching everything else go around you. You have no say, no control, nothing. And this way, we, we're probably gonna have to join. It'll cost us. Well, that's part of what you put on that water.
All I needed to, if you have an idea, are there meetings that are coming up soon?
Yeah, all, all you know.
If you'll email that to me so I get it scheduled and-
They're just probably getting going again.
Okay.
The last-
Usually they're, what, like the third Thursday a month or?
Yeah. And, and then two would you get a chance to meet at least one of the?
Yeah, that would be okay.
The Eva ones at eight in the morning, usually in Salem. I think it's usually two, three.
Those are the ones I need.
Yeah, it's early in the morning.
I could make them, so.
I'll get you on the email list.
This is on Monday.
Okay.
They do say, they eight in the morning.
That's all I got. Cody, do you want to just quickly take storm drain?
Yeah.
Your portion there?
Roads and storm drain, there's really obviously not a whole lot going on with that. They're keeping the snow off the roads and into storm drains right now, so.
I just have something on snow plowing the roads. The turnaround up by my house, top of Canyon B Drive. My neighbor has always plowed that, because the city hasn't been. The neighbor moved and it doesn't get plowed anymore.
Oh, really?
The, um, it's a mess up there. You go look at our road, because normally-
Up there, it's been plowed.
Well, that's because the neighbor always plows it. The neighbor-
He just moved then?
He just moved.
Yeah.
He just barely moved, last week.
So say it looks good.
Like I think the last snowstorm was the first snowstorm-
It was the first snowstorm that he hasn't plowed and it's a disaster. The garbage man this morning got stuck, took him a while to get out, because he has to back up into the turnaround that's not plowed and he was like spinning and anyways.
I got swept or something.
That needs to be taken care of now. And I just want you to know, because if you leave the snow there and then we get another big snowstorm, it's gonna be a big mess to get rid of. So you may wanna take a truck up-
Do you have a lot of hot chocolate available at home?
I've got hot chocolate, that's right.
We have our own hot chocolate.
There is a car that's parked down there too that's gonna be in the way that needs to move. The little white one that belongs to-
Yeah, right by the mailboxes.
That's right there by the mailboxes. It's in the way. I about took it out and then Dave Jean about took it out. He went up there with the six we were to, so we could help dig them out, because the neighbor that plows it isn't there anymore, but.
Anyway, sorry, I just wanted to be aware of that, so.
Yeah, I didn't know they moved, so I was gonna tell them.
The new guy has a plow and his truck up, he totally not?
Oh, does he?
But they're not moving in for a while, because they can't-
Oh, they're assigned up for service now?
Yeah, but they can't get any of their stuff up to the house.
Because they-
Because they can't get a moving truck up the road, because it's too-
There's like two feet of smell up there.
Too much-
It's too steep. I mean, you can barely get up there with four wheel. You'll spin out, you'll hit that curve, you'll often have to back down.
It's difficult to get up.
They're, they're not putting-
There's like another foot of snow up there versus right here.
Yeah, yeah, there was, there was two feet at Gunderson's, which is just barely-
But that make, that means that the new people moving in may not plow the city turnaround anyways.
Well, what we usually do, we'll come back after the storm and walk it out and stuff.
And do it. Yeah, that's fine. I just want-
We always come back and it's done, so I honestly, I don't go up there anymore.
Yeah, well, the neighbor was doing it, so I just wanted to let you guys know, because he got stuck this morning.
Storm drain will start as soon as it starts getting above about forty degrees, we're gonna start using that back truck. They said not really to run the jetter truck until it gets above forty-five to fifty, just because of the water freezing and stuff. But to go out and suck catch basins and stuff, we're gonna go, just so we can keep up on it. They came. I jumped ahead a little bit. Anyways, we got the back truck last Tuesday. We did a full day of training on it. We did jet a couple of sewer lines, backed out a sump down by the shop. It's pretty, there's a lot going on with it obviously, but it's not. It's, it's a pretty nice truck, really nice truck actually. I can't believe how nice it is what we got, so. That's gonna be super handy to have. So we'll start, we'll start doing that as soon as we get up to where, temperature wise, we can go out and start jetting the sewers, we gotta jet our whole system this spring. So that's gonna be one of our big, big tasks right up front. GIS update, maybe they kinda wanted me to just talk about what is the GIS system. There's a lot of kind of from what I'm hearing, a lot of misconception about what exactly the GIS system is. So I'll just give you kind of the broad overview of it. I don't have it on my laptop. We didn't buy a license for it, so it's down on our computer in my office. Down to the public works building, but it's strictly a utility management program. It's not a work order system. It's not a trackier maintenance on vehicles or maintenance on parks. I mean, you could, I guess, but that's not the right application. It's strictly water lines, sewer lines, roadways, storm drain, any of your, your main utilities. It's a management system for that. So when we initially bought it, we bought the sewer application, the water application. And I think it was the storm drain one. We're just getting into where we have to comply with the state. We're trying to not do that a whole lot, but we are in that with the state storm water regulation now, so we, we bought that with it. We're gonna have to start really doing a lot of work on the storm drain side of stuff with it, but. So right now, what, what we can do with GIS stuff is we can track any of our maintenance, any water leaks, any issues with meters, sewer lines, any jetting, cleaning sewer lines, manhole inspections, all that stuff has been put on there. And so we can, it's color recorded, you can, you can run reports and it'll show me every line in the city that hasn't been cleaned in the last two years. And it will run them down there and give you the line ID and then you can type in, you can locate it on there and stuff, so. As far as like, at one point it was brought up to maybe put a, a parts, like mowing schedule or tree maintenance schedule or fertilizer schedule on there. That's not the application. That's not what it's for. What we talked about, the roads scheduling?
That can just be done-
That's exactly what it's for. You know, classifying your roads and coming up with a, a grading system in there. However, we did not purchase that application. Hoping to have numbers, rough numbers, because I know that's obviously what you guys are gonna ask, what that would cost to get that. But our, my GIS dad's down in Florida for the week on vacation, so he said when he gets back up here, he'll get me that. So I can have stuff like that. That obviously is something that we probably ought to add on there. At the time, just the amount that we paid for it, we just, we didn't get that part of it, so.
Do we pay an ongoing fee every month for that?
No.
Okay.
No, we're not.
Just buy the system and then-
There's no subscription fee or anything like that?
No, no, there, there's a, a yearly licensing fee, but you don't have to to buy the licenses every year. It's, it's more of a maintenance thing. Where we're not using it, we don't have a, basically a GIS Art View server. I don't see the need for it. We're pretty much data entry and that's it for now. And we use it for blue staking as well. We get, you know, contractors will call us up and want a blue state done. We'll go mark it and then they'll still have questions, so we can zoom right in on their spot, print it off and give them the map and paint it as well and say, there you go, and then they don't have to bother us anymore. That's huge for anyone to go down there on that cloud, any of the guys, whether they've been here a day or two, and they can go do a blue state, because it's all GPS, it's all survey grade GPS. So in the winter time, it also helps for finding water meters and everything else, because you can zoom in and it's within plus or minus a foot and, you know, it's, so you get very close to it.
But that's the kind of system I think we need to have, so as we transition out, people transition out of, you know what I mean?
Well, that's why we bought it, because then-
We know, because there's been so many times that's come up here and everybody's going, well, I don't know when that, you know what I mean?
Yeah, well, and, and-
We still don't know when things will last.
On top of that, it's only as good as the data that's getting put into it.
Right.
So, manpower is another big thing with it. And another thing that's gonna come up on our budget that I probably should throw on this, the dream list, is a GPS system for that. They're around ten thousand dollars to get all set up in it, but then, that way anytime we dig up anything and there's a utility, whether it's ours or not, most cities that have that are shooting everything. And they're starting to piecemeal together their map system that shows everything, whether it's power, gas, phone, whatever. So the more pieces of that puzzle you get down the road, that's gonna be huge for, for their knowledge, you know? Anyone coming there and look at that and know exactly what's going on in their whole system. That's something that we really ought to probably start planning for and look at getting.
So is the new roads are put in and the new pipes, is that all getting data?
Yeah, so any, any new developments that they have to give us, the electronic stuff. I've been getting that and I send it up to our mapping company, which is Gateway Mapping. They're out of Orem. They're a sister company of J E B Engineers. That, I don't know if anyone's familiar with that group, but they're they're pretty much, they're not the only game in town, but they've created some background apps to run with Art View that are huge on the utility management side. And so almost all your cities in Utah go with them. Because you gotta buy their apps anyways. And then they set it all up for you, so. So they're managing it for me kind of, but right now for the last two years, we haven't done any updates, just because they haven't had the money. This year I do have the money, but I wanna wait till we're almost done. And then do the updates this, this next early summer. So all, whatever development's done, is done. All the water line sewer line projects is done for the year. Then I'll have them come and shoot everything. All of our stuff that we've done, the sewer line projects, the water line projects have not been shot since they've been put in, so we need all that shot. And then, and then the maps redone there, so. I, we budgeted for that last year, so we will get that done. But that's something that down the road, as we get more manpower and training on that, we can do a lot of that in-house too. So, it's a valuable tool, but like I said, it's only as valuable as what you put into it. So. Back truck update, we went over that. The truck is everything we could have hoped for. So if anyone wants to go for riding it, come down with your buttons. It's pretty sweet.
Or if we get a one-line break?
I was gonna say, actually, I wanna go on a tour of the-
Shop?
Shop, yeah.
Put one down?
Okay. There.
Give us one, we'll probably tighten up a little bit. We're dudes. It's not bad. Royce, what's it bad? Okay, well, yeah. Oh, the trails grant, I submitted that yesterday. I hope I did it right. I've been meeting with Stacy Peterson, who's kind of spearheaded this, and she's gone and met with, with Sean and Jim at Mount-
Stacy's, Stacy's still on that planning commission, remember?
But then she was out of town, so she asked if I would do it, so I emailed it off a day early to Sean, said if there's anything you need to change, let me know, and I changed it and I never heard back. So I assume we're good. I did get an email today about going to the meeting on Monday for the presentation, so that must be made accepted and we'll move forward with that. So I'll go to that meeting, make the presentation on Monday and then and we go through the process of eliminating. I did have the process last year. I don't mind doing it, so I just keep, keep going with that.
It's important that he does that because he knows other people, they know him. And it is a lot who you know.
It's a lot who you know. Yeah, it's a popularity contest. Last year, it was not popular.
This year?
This year, I've spent a little bit more money on my campaign and hoping that it's gonna work out.
I hope you trump everybody.
I don't have enough hair. It's all fallen out. The chemo really does keep my hair up. Anyway, that's it for me. Any questions, comments, remarks?
Okay, yeah, thanks. Anything on S E S D?
No. Other than, I will tell you, and this is something to just kind of keep in the back of your mind. Our Lofer Canyon well and the lack of the kind of power we'd like to have up there. They are planning now, but it's gonna be a while, but there will be a, a loop that'll go up on the south end of town and it'll connect us and Woodland Hills together. And it'll probably run right along where the association gate is, that fence line.
And we have conduits in the ground from the gate to our well.
Yes. So, but I, but I bring this up just so that you're aware, so when they come in and they come talk to the city about running this line, if we work with them, it'll help get that power where it needs to be, so that we can down the road make upgrades.
Pretty much every snowstorm, we have power outages up there.
Yeah. And so, I mean, it, it is something that they're, they're putting together right now, the preliminary cost figuring that out, and then they're gonna start utilizing impact fees that they've collected to make that upgrade, so that we have a better loop. And it's all could explain, probably better than I could, why it's important to have looping in your system.
It's like the water valves in the water.
Yeah.
And it'll be underground.
Yeah, it will be. It will be underground.
So I have a question about that power. I know we talked about drilling another well up there and the big drawback to that was-
With the power, yes.
Three-phase power.
Three-phase.
So will this power that's coming in?
It won't be, it won't be in our short-term timeframe. I mean, we're, we're talking, it's probably gonna be five to 10 years out.
Well, five to 10 years.
So we'll need another well by then.
Well, yeah, we will.
But, but the power they're coming in will have the three-phase power that we can support another well up there.
Yes. We could re-drill that one.
So for future, for future efforts.
For a three-phase motor, yes.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Anybody have anything else? I don't have anything else.
For the whole meeting?
I make a motion.
Next minute.
Well, do you want me to, or do you want, do you want to move forward with doing a community cleanup date, or do you want me to talk to people and ask about that, or do you want to assign someone to? Sorry, I'm jumping and saying, do you want me to do that?
She just volunteered for, for down there. Work with Cody on that.
Volunteer what she can't do, that's gonna stop her, she'll get burned out.
Yeah.
Oh, do you have a meeting, have you?
Oh, I've worked with lots of councils.
Worked with, worked with Cody for the scheduling and that sort of thing, and with Melanie, and they're the ones who schedule our dumpsters and such, and yeah, let's take a look.
I think it needs to be centered around the city when it cleanup.
It does.
Definitely does.
Which is-
I think we need to get that word out to to everybody that this is a plan for a service project, you know, to all of us, all the state.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If, if I can get a date, then I'll go to them and talk to them about it and let you know what they-
We did that a little bit last year, but not to the extent that we need to, so this is a-
And then they can come up with projects of what they want done, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Or, or it can be a service project, just citywide, coordinated by each of the neighborhoods.
That's true.
Along with, I mean, we've gotten lots of options there. Okay. Any, anything on the minutes?
Yeah.
Please.
On the ratified poll vote we took.
Yes.
The Lawrence County system. I think that it's abstain, right? Not abstain?
Yes.
Yes. It needs, yeah.
Put line? Put paint and line number.
It's like paint, line twenty-six, twenty-six and twenty-seven.
How did you count that? That's amazing. I saw that.
I know, because I'm the world's worst speller.
Spell checker.
Actually, I am.
They built computer developers.
The spell checkers ruined me.
Abstain, just an A, that's it. That's correct.
And I don't think, I don't think it should list Trish and me as abstaining, but probably not eligible. Because abstain, as we learned,
Yes.
It's the, if that was the case, then you shouldn't have voted.
Yeah.
Right? So really, it should be that we were not eligible to vote.
That's correct.
That's true.
Right? That way,
Good point.
That way it doesn't-
Which is correct, those.
So, yeah, you'd need to fix line twenty-one as well.
Which actually-
Because it says abstain there.
Yeah, good point. Let's see, Ty, what was, what was that that you were, we were talking about over at the meeting?
I know, I was just trying to look that up.
Have a rep assigned to-
Do you remember?
What was the, your sample, authorized three?
Oh, yeah, that's the board for the, for this, Vegas City, whatever it is, right?
Vegas City sounds.
Yeah. And-
We can have three representatives?